Welcome to the zoning board of appeals meeting, September 17th. I have a motion to open the meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, first order of business is the minutes from July 16th. Does anybody have any additions, deletions? Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I guess we've got June 18th slipped in here. Anybody have anything on those?
No.
Okay, motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, that brings us to our first public hearing item, 23 Abbott Street. We have the applicants come up front, tell us who you are and what you want to do. So, do we open this? Do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now you can tell us who you are.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, for the record, my name is Jeff Valcourt. This is my wife Lindsay. We live at 23 Abbott Street. And we are here looking for a special permit to conduct a or construct a single car garage with an ADU above. Unfortunately, we already have a pre-existing non-conforming lot. And to make things work out, we have to encroach a little bit further on our neighbor's yard. This ADU is going to be for my father, who just recently sold his house that he lived in in Westford since 1980. It kind of got too big for him, too much maintenance. And he came up with this idea to do this about six months ago, and here we are. I think it's going to fit into the neighborhood really well if you see the plans. It's going to look very similar to the neighbor's house that just recently had a renovation done to the left of us, the Canals. They also didn't get it in time to get in your packets, but they sent a nice letter of support for us for this application.
Okay, so we are receiving a letter from David P. J. Cornell in favor of this application. And that appears to be decided it's going to have a greatest impact?
That's who we're encroaching on, yes, sir, Mr. Chair.
Let me start off by saying that this type of application has always been the intent of this board when it came to ADUs. It was designed to keep a family member or some relative be able to live in Westford, where they've been there most of their life or their whole life, in a situation where they can age in place, as they say.
We did, for a while, he was thinking about trying to find maybe even a rental. My aunt had a couple of units that he could have rented with the cost of rents. It was cheaper to stay in his big house. It cost him less each year. We looked, even looked into finding a little ranch in Nav or something like that for him. But it just economically wasn't viable. Everything you would, you might as well stay in that house. There was no place really for him to go. And this is what we come up with. I think it's going to look really nice. It's not any more detrimental to the neighborhood.
So, the first floor is basically going to remain?
Exactly as is.
Untouched.
Untouched.
As is the second floor?
Second floor of the main house, correct.
And not going to be a walk-through from the second floor of the main house to the new?
No, we thought about that into the other bedroom, but then that would have been getting into tying into the other dormer. And it kind of looked funky with one big long dormer, and then on the right side, it didn't go all the way over, because I only have like a half dormer across the back of it now. So, we kind of scratched that out, but we oversized the stairway for someday possible stair lift or something like that.
Yeah.
To get access for him up there.
Okay, just two means of egress.
There will be a second means of egress out the back with a little deck.
Yeah. Anybody on the board have any other questions or comments?
Pretty straightforward. Yeah, I know, as you mentioned, ADUs in the past have been more exactly like that right here.
Yeah, and it's funny, guys, that he grew up, my grandfather built the house directly across the street. So, from his bedroom, he's going to be looking out every morning at his childhood home, which I think is pretty cool. It's almost like he's coming back home.
Yeah, that's how the whole ADU originally was, was based upon that, you know?
Yeah.
So, families could take care of their parents, you know, and stuff like that, or if the child was to say or whatever. And it's consistent with what we've looked and approved of in the past.
Yep.
Hopefully, my son does this for me, so.
Jeff?
Yep, just a quick point. So, the most critical finding here, that the board should be prepared to make if they approve this, is that it would not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood as compared to the existing non-conforming, that side yard setback. I just want to be clear, we talked about encroaching on the neighbor, but it's really just into their own side yard setback, and it happens to be that neighbor's side. So, if there's not in any way encroaching onto neighboring property, it's just dipping a little further into your side yard setback.
Yeah, wrong choice of words, I guess.
So, I was neglecting mentioning to you that there's only four of us here tonight. Typically, there's five. You need all four votes.
Yep.
So, at this point, if you want to continue, that's great. If you don't want to continue, you can just say so.
I really don't want to drag this out another month.
Okay. I mean, that's perfectly fine with us.
Yeah, yeah, we'll take our chances.
Okay. Scott?
Yeah, I just had one quick question. On this back view picture?
Yep.
You do the renovation. Are you going to be equal with the back of your neighbor there on the right that just did their renovation?
I'm actually going to be a little bit further back.
All right.
Which, that's, if you read their letter, that's what they, they actually liked that because right now, from our backyard, where we sit in the backyard, we can see them in their patio. And we're going to block their view from us and give them more privacy, actually.
But it's going to be similar distance back?
Similar distance back, yeah.
So, we'll meet sort of similar to what they did?
Yes. And our garage won't be as tall and as big as theirs is now.
Okay. What about the rest of the board? Okay. Staff have anything else?
Just offer for public comment?
Yeah. Anybody in the audience to speak in favor of this?
Mayor of all, what personal thoughts are there? Just a couple of comments, one, they applaud the effort to try to keep your parents in the house. I think that's great. I would like it if the board asked the applicant to explore other options that wouldn't reduce the side setback. You know, the current setback is already 11% reduced from 15 feet, this is right, to about 44% reduced. And I think, you know, if you look at it as just one residential unit, might not be a big deal. But I think if you'd set the standard that, you know, anyone can reduce their side setback by 44% to meet this need, you know, suddenly it's going to eventually change the character of the neighborhood. So, I'm not saying that the board should reject it, but I would like to see the applicant explore other options, maybe, you know, on the other side of the house where there's more room to the side yard or towards the back or even up. So, I would just encourage exploring that a little bit more before just approving this. Thank you.
Okay, a lot of times, thank you, a lot of times what happens architecturally, it prohibits one side of the house from the other side of the house. And I think in this case, that's very true. The other thing I'd like to say is that an approval or denial of this particular application does not set precedence for the neighborhood or the town. This board looks at every single application individually, weighs the merits and the downside to it, and make our decision based on that. A lot of times, septic is a concern, if the septic is not placed in the right situation. And that also drives the location of these types of additions. So, if anybody else have anything from the audience? All right. So, can we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So, we are looking for an extension of a non-conforming residential structure to the side yard setback of eight foot six, we're 13'4" is the existing setback. And it will not be any more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing footprint. We have that motion.
Mr. Chair, one comment?
Yes, sir.
Similar situations in the past. I don't feel comfortable with the 8.6.
Okay.
All you need is the frame-up to mess up a little bit. It could cause an issue down the road.
Yeah.
I think we've given other applicants a little bit more relief than.
Okay, so what are you suggesting?
How good's your frame-up?
Pretty good.
Seven-six?
Maybe the dirt guy, really.
Maybe seven?
Seven-eight?
I just want to be careful taking more information in once the hearing is closed.
Should we reopen the hearing?
I'm not saying that's warranted. I think you as the board, if you're comfortable with the criteria, it's about deciding what exact relief you feel comfortable renting.
Okay, because it's a condition, correct?
You can improve for the plan, or you can improve it, you know, with some modest construction tolerance.
Okay, so Dan, what do you think the tolerance should be?
You had mentioned a foot, so maybe seven foot six? I mean, yeah, good monumentation out there, and they had a good surveying company do the work, so.
Not to exceed seven-six.
Yeah, I think I agree, since it's already non-conforming anyway, so seven-six. Six, I think. It tends to be consistent with what we've done in the past, so the extra four.
Okay, so, we are looking for a side yard setback not to exceed seven foot six, we're 13'4" is the existing setback. Will not be any more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing plan. We got that motion. So.
Second.
Scott?
Yes.
Ian?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
And I will also vote in affirmative. Staff has 14 days to write the decision. There is a 21-day appeal period. Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Seen you?
Really appreciate it.
Welcome to the hood.
Welcome back to the hood.
Welcome back to the hood, correct. So, the next thing we're going to do is interview the candidates for the zoning board of appeals. And after we have these interviews, we discuss as a board to see who we would like to recommend to the selectmen. And we received four voluntary activity forms, I see two of the four. So, we have a set of questions we're going to ask each candidate. And what we're going to do is take one of you at a time, the other one will sit in the hallway patiently, and then we'll call you in, and the other person can sit in the hallway that way. You can use your own answers. You don't have the benefit of the answers of the person for you. And that's how we will consider it. We will be taking the candidates in the order of which the activity forms were filed. So, that means Andrew Spanos, you're up. And Megan, you're in the hall.
Can I just ask that procedure?
Sure.
This is a full interview. Can I stay here?
We would prefer you to sit outside because we don't want you to have the benefit of the questions that have already been answered by Andrew. Jeff?
So, in my opinion, you can request that, but I don't believe we can require anyone to leave a public meeting. So, you can request it, and if she chooses to ignore that, then so be it.
Mm-hmm.
But I don't think we're going to ask anyone to leave a public meeting, so.
Okay. So, it's your choice. So, you're staying?
I'd prefer to stay.
Okay. Andrew, come up to the microphone, please.
Standing or sitting?
You can sit, have a seat. Looking formal here?
I just came from work, so I look pretty formal.
Tell us your name.
Andrew Spanos.
Okay. And then, tell us a little bit about yourself, where you live in town, family, everything else.
Yep. Grew up in town, went to WA. Moved away maybe when I was 24, my wife and I, who also went to Westford Academy, went to North Carolina, built a house down there. Cost of living was just so expensive up here. I loved playing golf, so I said, hey, this is a great chance to get down there, build a brand-new house right on a golf course, no maintenance. Had one kid at the time. Didn't realize how much we were going to be missing family and friends and so forth. And flying up for the holidays was a nuisance, they didn't want to come down. So, we ended up coming back up, went to Dunstable, built a house out there. My wife demanded that we have a family, so we have to determine, you know, we need a house, we need a place to stay, can't rent a place, hindsight being 2020, disaster. We were getting out there to spec the house, basically walked through it, and she's looking at me like, oh, my goodness, like, what have we done? And I'm like, hey, this is what you wanted. So, we immediately got there, lived there for two years, and started looking back into Westford because she wanted to get some roots down. She kind of bounced all around from California to Texas to then to Westford. And so, we moved back into town, we moved to Misty Lane, bought a house with our realtor, it was off-market at the time, so it was great. We were able to snipe right in where the Hargreaves used to live, actually. And lived there for the past six years.
Great, okay. So, now, can you tell us anything about the zoning act with the zoning in Westford?
The zoning act, yeah, was started in the 50s here in town to basically break up the town into different zoning districts.
Okay. And have you had an opportunity to either attend or watch our meetings at all?
In the past.
In the past, yeah.
I've watched them, yeah, on TV. Have not attended in person. Mostly when I was running for select board is when I was really tuning in to watch and get up to date. I can't say I'm currently up to date, but yes, in the past I have.
Okay. And what about practical experience with plans and building? You said you built a house in Dunstable.
Yeah, built three houses, all different adjustments that we've made, just raw from the ground up, bought the land, found the builder, put the builder in. My uncle's a builder, I worked for him growing up as a kid, started at 13. I studied at U N S Lowell as a civil engineer with a structural engineering specialty for a while.
Oh, okay.
So, very comfortable with plans, elevations, started it.
Is that what you do now?
No, it's not what I do now. Now I run a private credit firm in Cleveland, too. Totally different.
How did that work?
I don't know, I just fell into it. So, it's just one of life's mysteries, I guess.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'm very familiar with plans, elevation, so forth, and kind of marrying all the harmonious in-between on them, too, with, you know, budget, elevation plans, and then what kind of the land or the plot will allow. I won't tell you which of those is the hardest, either the budget from my wife's perspective or anything else, but I'd say it's probably the first one, yeah.
Right, okay. So, one of the things that we always look at in all these scenarios is that if someone comes to us with a petition, we're always concerned about how that affects the neighbors in the neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
Is that something you can address a little further?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, hearing out and understanding the petition fully is going to be important, but understanding the impact of the butters is going to be paramount to the decision on whether or not you're going to allow the variance. For example, when I was running for select board, one of the hot items was the Old Drew's Farm location, and whether that was going to be that farm-to-table restaurant. And trying to explain to some people who were so for it that the people that live in those neighborhoods that have butted never bought their home or moved into that home, assuming that there was going to be livestock animals one day in the backyard, that they'd have to deal with the smell on, you know, waste and so forth. So, I mean, understanding where the butters come from is paramount in making that decision on the variance.
So, one of the other things that we do, not often, but occasionally, when the laws change or courses are made available to us, is we participate in informational sessions, sometimes with staff or even town council. And, you know, is that something you'd be interested in?
Yeah, for sure. If I was to be part of the ZBI, I'd absolutely do that in anything. I mean, even what I do now, if you're going to do something, it's worth going all the way. So, it's actually probably kind of how I fell into what I do now, so, absolutely. I'm always on board for continuing education or whatever it might be to be more savvy with whatever I'm doing.
Mm-hmm. So, the zoning board gets involved in two main things, variances and special permits.
Yeah.
And are you familiar with either one of those in any fashion?
Yes. A special permit is given where it doesn't provide a detrimental impact to the neighborhood or the surrounding area of the town, right? So, some examples of that would be traffic flow, like the visual aesthetic of a neighborhood, ability for utilities to be supplied there, fiscal impact on the town, whether that may be on taxes or anything like that, environmental impact, excuse me, environmental impact and so forth. A variance is often determined by some sort of hardship, essentially.
Mm-hmm. Good. And so, we have what we call criteria that we use to grant variances. Are you familiar with those at all?
Yeah, variance is going to be granted based on the topography of the land, the shape, the soil type, whether there's a hardship involved, which there has to be, and how detrimental the impact is going to be left behind on the surrounding area. And the petitioner is going to have to approve all three of those things to get a variance.
And we don't see much of them now, but do you know much about what we call 40B developments?
Yeah, that's a Massachusetts statute where any time affordable housing falls below a certain number, I think it's 10%, a developer is able to come in and bypass the zoning laws and essentially put in a larger development with about 20% to 25% affordable housing inside.
They don't get to bypass much, but at least we get to condition it. Those are all good answers. Anything else you want to?
No, I just, I appreciate the consideration. I think that from my perspective, this would be a great fit for me, just living in this town basically my whole life. I think that this is important for how we shape and see the town for decades to come for my kids and for myself and for everybody else, and I'd love to just be a part of it. I appreciate the consideration.
And don't you have the family business in town?
I do. My father, he owns Floral Arts, the flower shop.
Before that, it was your grandparents?
It was, yeah.
Skylal Road?
Yeah, my grandmother's still kicking, too.
Is she?
Yeah, she will move out of her house. She's 92, lives in Chelmsford, yeah.
Wow.
I know.
Wow.
She's good, though.
That's awesome. All right, Andrew, thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Okay, you obviously know your name, Megan Cornell. Can you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure. So, I'm born and raised in Massachusetts, up on the North Shore. Lived here my whole life, except for college. Been in Westford for about eight years now. Prior to Westford, we lived in Arlington for about 15 years at the time, bought probably the smallest, cheapest house in Arlington at the time. And through a series of renovations, additions, both to the side, to the back, and up, built that house up until we accrued that as well and ended up here in Westford. I'm an engineer by training, I have a degree in biomedical engineering, and I've worked for the last 30 years in a series of medical device and biotech companies in the Boston area, primarily in quality. And I think that's one thing that actually would help prepare me for serving on a board like this. You know, one of the things that I've been responsible for for the last 20 years is overseeing deviation and non-conformity processes, whether we're talking about product or components or, you know, other things that don't meet the predefined criteria. And, you know, setting up a process for how that's evaluated, you know, both against customer needs, company needs, requirements, regulatory requirements, and trying to determine the best path forward that's going to meet the basic needs of all the stakeholders. Sometimes that's, we're going to use a product as-is because it meets the basic need, even though there might be something wrong with it. Other times, it might be, well, let's rework it, let's change it and bring it to a better state of compliance. And other times, it's, you know, there's no way we can use it, we need to, you know, just put it in the circular file, so to speak. But over the years, you know, in doing that with a number of different people and also incorporating concepts of risk management, like I said, I think are great background for serving on this board. There's a lot of overlap there. So, that's one of the things that led me to submit my CAF or VAF a month ago.
Okay, thank you. So, are you also fully with the zoning act in Westford?
I am. I can't give you a complete history of it, I can't dictate the 100-plus pages of it, but I've spent enough time going through it, you know, over the years to be familiar with it, with the, you know, with the use tables, you know, the dimensional requirements, you know, all the different overlay districts we have, the RA district, RB district, all those districts. So, yes, I'm familiar with it. Like I said, I couldn't quote you from it, but I've spent enough time going through it for different purposes that I'm quite comfortable with it.
Don't ask us to quote it either.
I wouldn't expect you to memorize it.
That's why we have those big books.
Exactly.
So, have you attended any of our meetings?
I've attended some, I've watched others. Can't say that I've attended all of them, but I've attended a number of different town board and committee meetings and tried to spread myself around. But yes, I have attended and viewed some of the ZBI meetings.
And do you have any experience with plot plans and building elevations and floor plans?
I do, and like I mentioned in the introduction, when we lived in Arlington prior to Westford, we bought a 750 square foot ranch, added on to the back, added to the side. A few years later, we added an entire second floor. And I did a lot of planning work myself. Had to hire an architect, even though I'm an engineer, I'm not a registered engineer. But, you know, I did design our second floor, designed the entryway, you know, did a lot of the floor plans, you know, quite familiar with building plans with elevations, all that.
Okay. And, you know, as I said earlier, one of our concerns always is the abutting property owners, whether it's next to the applicant, across the street from the applicant, or the neighborhood. And I was wondering if you had any comments or ideas about that?
Yeah, it's a great question. And it's one of those things. And it's one of those things that it's a balancing act. There's no perfect answer. You know, in the case of your application earlier, you know, I made the comment that, did you look at other options that wouldn't encroach on the side yard? And again, it wasn't by, you know, intended to say that I don't agree with this, but what are the other possibilities within, you know, the universe of possibilities? And is this the one that makes the most sense? And I think it's great that the abutter submits, you know, a letter of support, and that's great. But I think, you know, that the board, if I was to be part of the board, what I would try to do is not just look at the micro, but also try to look at the macro. So, it's great if you have support from neighbors for a particular application, but as much as possible, if the board can also, you know, take a step back and look at, well, it's great you've got this support, but how will it look five years down the road, 10 years down the road, when the next group of owners comes in? Are they also going to be happy with the way the neighborhood looks? And I think that's when you get back to, you know, the zoning bylaw and the use regulations and the setback regulations. That's one of the original intents in coming up with setbacks in different districts, from the front yard, from the side yards, you know, height restrictions. But it is balancing act because they're not hard and fast rules, because there are cases where you want to allow for deviations, there are cases where you want to allow encroachment on the side yard or front yard. But it's always, in my opinion, you know, trying to balance not just the immediate neighbors as it stands right now, but can we get any sense for how the neighbors in the future would think about this? And that's, you know, a much more nebulous, more difficult thing to consider. And it may not change the answer, but I think, you know, that's one thing that the ZBA should attempt to do, because, you know, these are not just, even though the variance is a one-time event, you know, the structure stays, you know, beyond all of our lifetimes and all likelihood. So, we have to try to think as much as possible, you know, that far into the future. And again, that led to my comment earlier about, you know, it may not be the intent to set precedent, but, you know, can we envision, you know, a year, five years, 10 years, 20 years down the road, when we start to have a lot of these? And will that change the nature of the neighborhood? Now, maybe the answer is it won't, and that's perfectly legitimate, but I think the ZBA should attempt to ask and answer that question. So, that's what goes through my mind when I think about these things, that it's, again, not just this immediate point in time, but let's look at how this will affect the neighborhood in the town into the future as much as possible. Did that answer your question?
Mm-hmm. Yep. Well, that's great. And would you be willing to take training courses and participate in informational sessions, sometimes with staff, or sometimes town council comes in when it gets really above our pay grade?
Yeah, of course, of course. And that's, you know, something that I do all the time in my job anyway. The laws and the regulations, both in the U.S. and overseas, are constantly changing, so I need to constantly stay on top of that. So, absolutely, if I was, you know, invited to be, you know, take the valuable seat and as part of this, absolutely, that's, you know, comes with the territory.
Okay. And do you know the differences between variances and special permits? And if you don't, that's okay.
Yeah, I can't give you the-
This is all stuff that has to be learned.
Right. I can't give you the legal definition or description of the difference. I could, the way I would, I would answer it right now, is when you look at the table, use table at the back of the zoning law, you know, where we have, you know, again, for each zone and each type of use, you know, it'll say that residential one, RA, that single-family home is, is yes, acceptable by right. And then there are other uses where it will say SPA or, you know, SPB, I think, because it can be either the zoning board or the planning board that has the authority to grant the special permit. But those are the cases where, you know, this use might be acceptable, but it has to go through that special permit process, and there can be, you know, heightened level of control and requirements put over that. It's not an automatic given that a special permit can be issued. And a variance, you know, from my understanding is more from the dimensional requirements table. And again, I could be wrong, but that's my current understanding, that, you know, if you have, you know, some of the more recent packets, I think there was one on Snow Drive that had a front entryway that encroached on the front setback by a few feet. It needed to be 50 feet, it was like 46. So, that's something that doesn't technically meet the setback, but, you know, the zoning board takes a look at that, and in the case of an entryway, yeah, probably not a big deal. It's, you know, issue that variance. Again, in the case earlier, earlier in this meeting about, you know, encroachment on the side yard. But in my mind, that's my current understanding of the difference between the special permit and variance, where the special permit is kind of a general use of a parcel, and variance is more to do with the construction of the parcel and how it fits up. And again, I'm sure that I'll be corrected if I'm wrong, and I probably am, but that's my understanding.
Okay. Any experience or any knowledge of comprehensive permits, which is the 40B housing?
I'm only a little familiar with 40B. You know, I believe it was one of the state's first attempts to address housing issues, what, 40 or 50 years ago at this point? And I think it was from around the 70s or 80s, I could be wrong. But yeah, and I don't know the exact numbers, but it's based on the percent of residential units that are deemed affordable. If we fall below that threshold, then it gives the developer additional possibilities to build a development. And again, I don't know all the mechanics of that and exactly what it would allow that developer to circumvent, but I know that's that, I believe it's 10%. I could be wrong, but there's some threshold where, and I believe right now we're slightly above that, I think we're on to say around 12%. I could be wrong, but I know we're above it somewhat.
Okay.
And again, I'm sure I'll learn more about what I just said that's wrong, but that's my current understanding of it.
So, does anybody else have any questions that they have in their mind for Megan? Okay, I think you've answered everything. Thank you for coming tonight.
All right.
We're going to have a discussion amongst ourselves, and you'll be notified.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. And the other two?
I'm sure this is here. They were contacted a few times and tried doing a confirmation with them that they would be here this evening, but I'm not sure where the other two individuals that submitted VAFs are at this point.
So, I did personally reach out last week, let them know they did state that they intended to attend tonight's meeting. I did do a follow-up phone call today, just as a friendly reminder. I did not reach those two directly. I did leave a voicemail message, though, but, so I don't know.
Okay. So, that was Elizabeth Scabber and, I can't pronounce that name, so I'm sorry.
You can get some maybe.
Mine, mine. that interested. So, I would not consider either one of them. Anybody else have any comments?
That's too bad, because they've all had, their resumes look pretty interesting.
Yeah. But I have to laugh. One said I can support multi-meetings and the research and the preparation that goes into the meeting.
Supposed to make a decision tonight.
What is the Pfizer staff?
It's not about staff, sir. It's, it's just, as you know, the select board is developing policy, and so one of the things they've asked is if the recipient board is willing to make a recommendation, that they provide it so they can factor that into their decision-making. I know we had received some stuff shortly before last month's meeting, but due to timeliness and scheduling, it made sense to schedule for this meeting, which we did. We did reach out to all four candidates, and, you know, at the time, all of them said that they would be here tonight. We were able to reach two of the four today, and the two that we were able to reach, they did attend. I don't know why, maybe something came up, I don't know. But, you know, you can certainly take action tonight, or you could delay, it's up to you, folks. Just when you do make a decision, if you decide to, we'll obviously share that information with the select board. I will also note that once someone has put their name in the hat and submitted a volunteer activity form, that should another opening become available over the next, you know, two years from that date, they'll still be given that same consideration. And if there's a vacancy and this board interviews again in the future, if, you know, they didn't make it tonight, they could still be considered for the next opening as well. So, it's really up to the board if you want to take action tonight or not. What's for the board?
I mean, is there a time limit? Is there a time limit when we have to?
The only thought on this would be that, you know, Dave's been with the board for quite a while, right? It probably would be worthwhile to have him if he can take a look at the tape and just give his opinion also. You know, Dave has always been a good-
He's the barometer, yeah.
Right. And I think that would be worthwhile to at least get some type of, what his opinion would be also besides ours, so.
Okay. That's fair. That's fair.
And if you'd like, we can reach out to the other two candidates, if you're going to do that.
I was going to suggest that.
Do that?
Yeah. I think that would be, would be worthwhile too, you know.
Sure.
And then that way, the next meeting, I think we could probably make a decision at that point.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
That sounds fine.
Okay. All right, so, we don't have to do anything beyond that, do we, on that? All right. So, the next little ditty is the reviewing of zoning bylaw amendments. We met with the planning board, and we have some materials for all four zoning bylaw amendments that were, you know, at this paper town meeting. For the three that you participated in actively, the planning board meeting, we did a letter that if the board was comfortable, or if you wanted to make some changes to it, we provide to the planning board at their next meeting on the 29th. Like I said, if you want changes to it, we're happy to make those. But we also threw in the materials for the change to the MBTA, or the proposed change to the MBTA communities overlay district over for the VDRA's company. I know you all didn't, again, actively participate in that discussion, but we wanted to include it just to see if you had any recommendations for that.
So, the board, they were, the planning board was tentatively scheduled to close the public hearings at Monday's meeting on the 15th, but we made them aware through conversations with the chair that this board might want to offer some comments on one or more of the proposed zoning bylaw amendments. So, they kept their hearings open, and they actually scheduled a special meeting for September 29th, so they can still take input while the public hearing is open. And you're also free to attend that meeting on the 29th or submit comments, whatever the board wants to, wants to do.
So, I guess I'll start by, under this NEM card, you know, the Real Sex Council Government's memorandum here, it says, "Further clarification may be needed regarding the maximum number of ECU's per lot pending discussion with the board." Is it, tell me what this is all about.
So, under current state law, everyone is entitled to a, what's called a protected use ADU. So, if it meets certain standards, dimensional requirements, you can have an accessory dwelling unit as of right. You still have to address certain permitting requirements, you have to address, you know, filing, you know, under the Wetlands Protection Act, if it's applicable, you still need to address, you know, septic system concerns, but the town would lack the ability to say, no, you can't have an ADU if it meets the criteria. And so, that being said, if an ADU does not meet that protected use ADU criteria, and I think one of the easiest examples for you folks is, one of the problems we had under our older bylaw is if someone had a modest-sized dwelling, say a ranch, we did away with percentages because those folks, on more than one occasion, even though they were posing a relatively modest accessory dwelling unit, say 400 square feet, they still needed variance relief, right? Because it was more than, say, 50% of the gross floor area of the dwelling, or 30% where we had at the time. And so, right now, under the state law, they brought percentages back in, right? So, the accessory dwelling unit for a protected use ADU, it can be up to the 900 square feet or 50% of the gross floor area of the primary dwelling. So, you, if you are over the 50% of the gross floor area, but still under 900 square feet, it's still not considered a protected use ADU. So, one of the things that we talked about with the planning board is, do you want to just get rid of the local ADU and only have the state protected use ADU? And the problem there is there's a lot of people with modest-sized homes that they would, they could run into, they could run into problems, because their ADU that's protected might not really be functional if you're starting off. It would really be forcing people to do a large addition to the primary dwelling unit for the sake of having a small accessory dwelling unit that was as of right, right? So, and I think the conversation, whether this board agrees or not, it makes some sense to still have a local accessory dwelling unit option that would be with a special permit by the zoning board. And let's say someone already has a protected use ADU, you could exercise your discretion and say, you're not going to get a second ADU, right? Because you have, through a special permit, you have discretion, you don't necessarily have to grant it. But if you grant a special permit for a local ADU, someone still has the opportunity to file for a protected use ADU, and you can't stop that.
So, there could be two.
There could. Now, we all know for most, most of the lots out there, you're still going to deal with septic, and so for many of the lots, it might not be a practical consideration, because how many, how many places can you have two ADUs with the multi-compartment tanks, whatever? And that would be considered probably new, new construction, because it's probably an increase in design flow, most likely, unless someone has seven bedrooms and they remove multiple bedrooms from their primary dwelling unit, enough to, you know, be offset with the others. Is it possible to have three? Sure. Is it likely? Not very likely. And if it is, is it going to happen a lot? Not likely. Not just because of zoning setbacks, the size of lots, septic consideration, wetlands, but it is possible. And so, I think if thought it was, well, not perfect, it's better to allow for the local use ADUs for those situations that don't fit the protected use ADU. And will some things happen that maybe you might not be happy about? Sure. But you'd probably do more good by having that as an option than not. And again, you're not obligated to grant a special permit for accessory dwelling units.
So, people who are conscious, the ADU was- So people who have noticed the ADU was approved in the past potentially could put another ADU.
That is correct.
Potentially, yeah.
Potentially, yep.
I guess if one, if somebody came before us for the special permit, and I'm not sure, can we condition that they don't do another ADU of that in our process?
We don't believe that is quite legit yet, based on conversations with council. If you, you could always exercise your discretion to not grant a special permit, and they still have the option to put in a protected use ADU. So, but that would be a decision for the board to make on a case-by-case basis at that time. And we don't know what...
Interesting.
I'm sure there'll be some case law evolving at some point, but I don't know when that'll be. But for right now, we don't believe you can grant a special permit for a local ADU and prevent a protected use ADU. So that's why...
You condition that approval based upon that.
We don't think you can do that. We've already, we've already asked early on.
Because it's by right.
We can't take away the as-of-right option.
That's what I mean.
Yeah.
You can't take away the by right.
Correct. Even if someone, right now, files for a special permit. So like, someone who might, you know, be putting in a protected use ADU, they would need a special permit to have another ADU. But if they apply for a special permit for an ADU, you still can't take away their right to put in a protected use after, you know, later on.
Well, I'm just envisioning, you know, somebody who had it, obviously, added on for an ADU onto their main house, and then they want to put something behind in the backyard, right? They could potentially do that.
Potentially.
Potentially. Those structures need to meet setbacks, and it needs to be all setbacks for Title V and meeting all the needs under that as well. The other thing the local ADU option does do for the structures that are out there, I think the chair brought the example of 63 Main during the planning board meeting, where you had an existing structure. Yes, it was over 900 square feet, but would it make sense to allow the conversion of that versus them having to demolish 200 square feet off of it, or whatever the exact number was, put an ADU in there? So at least it provides that option as well.
So is the language in this NEM cog document what supposedly going to be proposed?
So the language that's shown in red in there are the proposed changes. The planning board did discuss the change to this later here, I believe, 3.2. I, because you brought up that example, I think you were giving earlier, Jeff, on, you know, what if you have a structure that's not over 900, but is still greater than the 50%? So they speak that language there. I bet I forget the exact wording. He came up during the meeting.
It's interesting, you know, the purpose to provide small additional dwellings to rent without adding to the neighborhood buildings.
That's what I had yellowed off here.
What the hell does that mean?
That you're adding another building, or substantially altering the appearance of town. And that is substantially altering the appearance of town.
So...
So that doesn't, it's not consistent with the...
So what is, in black, is existing?
This is existing and...
So what's in black is existing, yep. Anything in red is where they're proposing, whether or not it's, you know, just added. You know, it would be in regular text if it's deleting something, it's in strike-through. If it's referring to another section, like appendix B here, it's in bold.
So if you go to 3.3.3 procedures, a mortgage inspection survey may be sufficient to meet these requirements if no exterior construction is proposed. I believe my predecessor would jump up and down on Holland's green, because we always wanted a certified survey.
One, I appreciate that. Two, that's existing language. And three, this is where there's no new...
Exterior construction, so just all interior work to an existing structure.
No new construction.
No exterior. Like, if there's an addition, you need a certified plot plan. If you're rejiggering what is already constructed, say, putting in a basement or something, this potentially allows for just the mortgage inspection plan.
So somebody can...
So new construction, you need the plan you want.
Even though you have an existing piece of property, and you're relying on mortgage survey plan, I wonder if that property is obviously not conforming pre-existing?
But I guess at the end of the day, if they're not doing any exterior construction and everything is internal, it's maybe no worse than what was existing.
Okay. Just testing.
Again, it's, it's the existing language.
Yeah.
There's lots of parts of our bylaw that we actually aren't proud of.
So the red cover letters are the proposed changes to the draft bylaw. Is that it?
Yes, sir. And Joe did mention one part that is changing based upon comments received Monday evening is...
Right on. 3.3.2, item I, or 1, depending on how you want to refer to it. That language would be tweaked, you have to capture the thought of the example Jeff gave, where if somebody, say, has a 1,400 square foot house, 50% would be 700, but they want to put in an 800 square foot ADU.
So I guess the thought is sort of right up front. A local ADU is an ADU that cannot qualify as a protected use ADU.
Yeah.
So the parking requirements, so it's two per dwelling unit? Well, we're saying we have to watch, but wouldn't have an ADU proposing no more than one additional parking space? Is that what you're saying?
That was the other part, like, the planning board requested the change to make that at least one.
At least one.
As opposed to not.
At least one. So I mean, like, if somebody had four, would that be an issue, I guess?
If there are three existing spaces, and this board finds that three are all that is required between the primary and the accessory, you could say one of these is assigned to the ADU, two to the primary dwelling unit, where you could say, "Look, you need one additional parking space." So you would have that discretion as part of, you know, granting a special permit, case-by-case basis.
I'm just wondering, you know, if somebody owned a house, right, and they ended up, they want to rent part of their house as an ADU. And the bar could question if they have more than one car there. Is that what you're saying?
Well, it's certainly possible for accessory...
For a milliary factory.
It's certainly possible for even accessory dwelling unit. There could be two people living there, and they might have two cars. The primary might only have one car.
So you're not restricting it to one car, right?
No.
No?
At least one car.
At least no more than one additional parking space would be added.
So that's...
The planning board wants to change it to at least one additional.
No more than one, right?
No, that's what it says. At least one.
No, 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 I'm saying, yeah, there's a two. I'm saying...
In case Grandma and Grandpa move in and they both drive.
Right.
Exactly. In case Grandma and Grandpa move in and they both still have cars and drive, you need at least one.
I'm just thinking of the angry operator there.
So that's typically something we would say is, how many people are going to live in the ADU? How many cars are you going to have?
Yeah.
Yada, yada, yada.
But we're not going to have that.
The locals.
No, this is the local one.
Yeah.
The state one, we have no...
Yeah, we all know it.
No comment.
Okay. And under these districting bylaws...
Do you have any more questions about the accessory dwelling unit?
No, I think we're...
The board...
Of the letter that was drafted to be...
So...
So that, we took a stab based on our conversation we had with you. If we're on track, great. If we're not, just let us know in your diplomatic way, and we'll make edits as necessary.
No, I think those letters, the letter was fine, in my opinion. Everybody else can read it, see what they think, but...
That was very eloquent, that one, wasn't it?
Yeah, very nice. It's got any of you. I read this today. I knew that you didn't read.
He provided the input. He merely organized it.
Nice job, Joe.
It doesn't sound like we're going to find a lot, get a lot of ADUs anymore, obviously, right?
Well, it all depends.
Well, it's special cases.
Not everyone is going to be able to practically qualify for protected use. Like, if they have a modest-sized home, they may well need a local ADU.
Yeah, well, so if you have, like, a three-inch lot, you're not restricted to how many ADUs you can put on that?
So...
Well, I mean, on the state side, I'm saying, huh?
No, on the state, you get one.
One protected use ADU.
Then they would have to come back to us for a...
If they're smart, they'll come to us first.
Exactly.
Then do the state one.
However, you have discretion and...
On the state?
No, you have discretion about if someone comes in for a local, whether or not to grant. You, you won't see it unless it's incidentally, like, say, they need setback relief or something. If, you won't see it if it's a protected use ADU. So... So he's okay with the ADU one?
Yeah, yeah.
When we're done, when you decide, it would be great to have some votes, whether or not you support or not?
So the letter to the planning board regarding the ADUs, whether it's on a local level, local ADUs, is everybody okay with that letter? Great. So we have a motion to be fine.
So...
All those in favor?
Aye.
The next one, Joe.
Uses.
Now, this is unchanged from when you folks last saw it. You've already sort of indicated you were proving it. There have been no comments or changes to this throughout the planning board public hearing process. So this is exactly as you last saw it.
Yep. Again, it's just adding some options to, perhaps to meetings in there. Most of these are with the zoning board. I think there's one item in there that is an additional special permit with the planning board, a hotel in the IH. But otherwise, all the other uses are zoning board special permits.
What is ID District?
It's a quirky...
There are two parcels that fall in the ID District.
Yeah.
They're right up towards the north side, I think, off of Kingsborough Road. Is that right?
We're sure there's an interesting story there.
It's a part of the 1985 Route 40 corridor study. That was the last time Route 40 was like that. And by corridor study, I mean, it was just basically looked at everything north of Route 40. And they came up with some recommendations out of that, and I believe the ID District was...
And that's on Route 40?
No. So you see the red?
Yeah.
Sorry for those.
Yeah.
That red is the ID. We haven't had time to research the history there. We're sure it's very creative. But we don't, we don't know. It's just a couple parcels there.
Doesn't look like you can do a damn thing, maybe, on these tables, and everything's, no, 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 no.
I'm sure it's got a great story.
Is that what they asked for?
No.
No.
Is this the other one, Route 40?
That one is IA, Route 40, so thank you, Joe.
Summer Village Condo Association. That's where it is?
Yep. This one's off Kingsborough Road. It's owned by the town.
Can you click on that other one?
So it doesn't even have legal access?
That one does say, "Summer Village." The other one's... No, I'm sure there's a good story.
But there's no legal access to it, right?
I have not researched that.
It's funny, because there's all homes in there now with Crown Rivers and all that.
There may be some easements.
Yeah, this is the town line.
But those dash lines indicate there may be some kind of easement through there, but we haven't researched it, and I don't want to give out inaccurate information.
Is that, is that that chunk of land that Summer Village gave back to the town for open space?
I can't say. I don't know.
So those are the only two parcels?
Well, I brought that one up.
The parcels on the ID District.
What does ID mean?
Industrial D.
What is it?
Industrial D.
Industrial D, yeah. That's, that's the code. So...
That's your homework for next month, Joe.
So the table of use regulations, how is everybody feeling about what's there now?
We kind of went through this a couple of meetings ago, right?
Yeah. So essentially, it just made some of the noes, SPAs.
So, and say, SPA, so people can come before you.
For us, yeah.
Call for this, right?
Yep, yep.
By law, most of the changes do involve the IH, CH, or IA, which would generally be Littleton Road, Powers Road, Route 40.
Well, I think you're going to start to see some different types of development in those areas. Or uses, I shouldn't say. Uses as opposed to developments. The one tends full up. So can we have a motion to approve this use table as presented to us?
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So next is the MBTA Communities Overlay. Those changes in Gutierrez Company. And the map essentially tells the story. So they would be looking to add a parcel here, has an address of 5, Technology Park Drive. And they would agree to take out two parcels, 2 and 6, Technology Park Drive. You know, result in a modest reduction to the size of the district and the available unit capacity, you know, by a one and two-thirds acres reduction. NEM cog did review it, ensured that, yes, we still have compliance, just so we can say that to town meeting. What this would allow, now that the Gutierrez Company has resolved a number of leases, they've identified this building, is looking to turn it over for a modest residential development. They're looking to use something like this. It would consist of 80 units, over 40 units, over two buildings each, so 40 units each for total 80, as well as a restaurant group hub standalone structure here. The yellow outline is where the existing structure is today. So from square footage percent, you know, it's probably slight, it's probably a bit less.
What's Building 2 right now?
So Building 1, Building 2, those are identified as two sets of 40 units total. So for total P units is what the development they're looking to do, as well as this one-story standalone structure for a restaurant of roof up. So that's Building 1, Building 2. The yellow outline is the existing building out there today.
Joe, these are for sale, not for rent.
These would be, yes, ownership for sale units.
I like this project. I think that's what MBTA Communities is supposed to be.
Yeah, they're developing kind of a neighborhood concept with a restaurant, you know, apartments or condos, whatever you want to call them, not overbearing, certainly for the 13 or 15 acres. Yeah, that's what, yeah. I think that was the whole concept that everybody was trying to develop. And would these units be serviced by the sewage treatment plant that exists?
Yes.
Yes.
And it has the capacity?
Yeah, fits their existing capacity out there.
I mean, I think, I think it's a very planned...
By, by giving them this use section. Swap it. It's just swap, it's just a swap, so they can't come back and ask for another piece down the road.
They would have to go back to town meeting if they wanted to try to do something else.
So the question, oh, they have indicated they would like it to be age targeted but not age restricted, so they're suggesting at this point, there would be no formal restriction, but the way they design it, the layout, the amenities, they try to target either empty nesters, people looking to downsize, or, you know, folks generally without children, though, wouldn't be a requirement.
Mm-hmm.
They've done this, I believe, in some other locations with pretty good success.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think there's a huge market for that.
So the question is, we didn't know if this board wanted to weigh in and offer an opinion or not, but we figured, since they kept all the hearings open, why not have the opportunity if you want to?
I mean, I would say that I'm in favor of it, and that would be my recommendation, go into the planning board. Can you take a vote?
That would be great.
So, I would say that the zoning board of appeals is in favor of this. I have a motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And there you have it.
All right, thank you.
All right, so one last one, the tiered site plan review. Again, that's a little bit longer on this one.
No.
And I think the primary concern the board had was perhaps a provision that was put in there, I talked about if something required a site plan review and special permit, the planning board would become the special permit granting authority. The revised language that NEMCOG provided to the planning board, but they wanted to get your opinion on, they changed it from just any site plan review to major site plan review, so if something that required a special permit and major site plan review, the planning board would become the special permit granting authority. The way we drafted the letter, they would just take that provision out, so in that way, it would just fall however it falls in the use table, if the zoning board was the special permit granting authority, it would stay that way, no matter which level of site plan review was required, but I don't know if the board feels like you like NEMCOG's suggestion, or you like our suggestion, or if you want to discuss that.
So, I think it's important that this board do the special permits, because in order for them to proceed with their site plan reviews, they first want to know if this board is going to say, yes, we agree, and no, we don't agree, so they can come here for short money, get the answer before they spend big money to develop something. Is that what you're saying, what you're looking for?
So this, this, if I may, this is based on, you know, a conversation we had with you, there was another board member we spoke with that after the fact, so we thought it made sense to, based on your input, at least have a draft letter so you could, you know, talk with the rest of the board. So I will say, I don't think it's so simple, because sometimes someone might need a special permit, that could be for water resource protection overlay district, or if they want to get a reduction in required number of parking spaces. I think the classic example that you folks think of is, if somebody needs a special permit for the use, like you're not going to do all the detailed engineering design to know whether or not you can do the use, right?
Mm-hmm.
And so I don't think that has been, if that is what you're open to or not, I don't think that's captured by the way this is worded now. And then the other factor is, as you know, there's another zoning bylaw amendment that could introduce a lot of other special permit opportunities, where I think this board might end up with like 10 of those options. So we just want to have the conversation with you folks, do you want to just take the latest change from the planning board, anything that requires a public hearing, site plan review, does the planning board become the special permit granting authority, or do you want to suggest, let's wait and see what happens, what does town meeting approve, you know, maybe take a look at separating the special permits for uses versus the other kinds of special permits, you know, because I agree, even if the planning board was the special permit granting authority for a particular use, they still might go to the planning board first for just the special permit, till they know whether or not they can do that use, and then follow up with the detailed engineering and stuff, because you're not going to invest the many, many thousands of dollars probably until you know you can do the use, right? So, so I don't think it's as simple as SP and site plan review, I think it's a little more complicated, and I didn't know, I thought you folks should at least have a direct conversation, because all those special permits that are suggested in the use table now, in almost, I'd say the vast majority of instances, that would just end up going to the planning board if it says site plan review and special permit.
Yeah.
It's one and the same, so I don't have all the information right now, but we're getting down to the deadline for what we need to have for language for town meeting, so I still think, I'm all for streamlining permitting, believe me, but I think, I think this could be a bigger change than we think, and I still think, even if it gets approved, and you express some reservations about the planning board being the special permit granting authority, I still think this moves the needle a huge amount by still streamline permitting, and can certainly take a look, again, you know, in the future, when the dust settles, you know, when we see what the end result is from town meeting, and what the applications we receive are, and maybe there will be a way that makes sense to us to separate the high level use from, you know, the other kinds of, where they're already having to do the engineering, do you know what I mean? Does that make any sense?
No, I think you and I had that discussion that just because NEMCOG wrote it doesn't mean we like it.
That was your part of the conversation, as I recall?
Yes. Absolutely, so I think you're correct in that, you know, leave it...
I think we should leave it as is, the way it is now.
Yeah, put the brakes on a little bit, and see what town meeting wants to do, I guess.
So, I'm trying to separate, so I know you would prefer to have the special permit granting authority remain what it says in the table of uses.
Mm-hmm.
But are you for the tiered site plan review if the special permit granting authority remains what it says in the table of uses?
I would be for that.
Okay, well, it's, it's a big difference of message if you say, we're not in support of this amendment, versus, we could support this amendment if the SP stays whatever is designated in the use statement, do you know what I mean?
Well, and the other thing that you and I talked about, and I thought on my own about, is that, you know, the planning board is loaded with projects and things to do, to dump one more thing on them, I think is going to cause issues. I think we have the ability to do this, and that's why I think we should stay as the authority that does it.
Yeah, that doesn't seem like streamlining, does it? I mean, if it's going to be...
Skipping a step, that's all it's doing.
Way down somewhere.
Well, to, to be fair, there would be, if there's the administrative and the minor and the major site plan review, the planning board would no longer see the administratives, that would come off their plate, and the minors, although they would still see it, it would be far less processed administratively, because it wouldn't be a public hearing. So there would be some things coming off their plate, but you're right, this would put more things on their plate, and I'm just not in a position to tell anyone right now, I don't know what that does as compared to the current workload or not, that's why maybe we should live with it for a while and see.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, because it's not just, you know, you get into a major development, mostly commercial, you know, besides the land, the building, you get signage, you get, you know, all the other things that go on, that the planning board now has to make decisions on, you know, this would just be one more thing. We've had plenty of those big developments, and they, they take a lot of time, especially staff time.
We're aware, yep.
Yeah, I know you're aware.
Those going to this year would help in terms of some of the...
It would.
Administrative burden.
But, but then when we get to the administrative stuff, now it's back to you as staff to make those decisions on top of everything else you have to do.
But, to be fair, there's an administrative component to whether it's administrative, minor, or major, so right now, there's always an administrative component.
Mm-hmm.
So, with those changes, though, there would be less administrative burden for the minor site plan reviews as compared to that which requires a public hearing, and every, every agenda item that is saved from going to a board's, you know, meeting, that saves staff time, because there's always a staff cost, so to speak, for anything that makes it to your agenda, right? So we still always have to deal with administratively anyhow, so to me, that's, that's kind of almost a wash, but it does take away incrementally from all the items that are no longer public hearings that used to be public hearings, because that creates a lot of burden in public hearings, and it creates a lot of delays for applicants. It could be three months instead of two weeks, three weeks, that's a big deal, and just the, the legal cost for advertising in the newspaper. It's a lot of unhappy people at the cost it is these days to publish twice in the newspaper, and there's, there are no choices, it's a lot of money. So if you're looking for a very modest business, changing use, that's a big deal to, say, three months and say, you know, at least a thousand bucks, could be a couple, several thousand, depending on whether or not the application fee is, and what's waived or not, so that's, that's a big deal.
And I, and I still, I brought this up at the planning board meeting, under administrative site plan review, restriping of existing parking lot. If someone wants to put new stripes in their parking lot, it has to come in front of you for a review?
I think, and that was another item that they got talked about, I don't think it refers to if the lines fade, putting fresh paint down. I think it means if you're changing the layout or the organizing of existing paved ways, say, like you're changing where the lines go, and changing circulation, that would usually get looked at, not, the lines are faded, repaint them, so I don't think that's...
What about repainting the parking lot? And then having to repaint for that, for the 40?
No, that's, that's sort of maintenance.
Because they could technically change without anyone knowing if they paved the top of the parking lot.
Yeah, it's, it's a possibility.
But I just think that...
That it's supposed to get changed to reconfigure the existing parking lot.
So we'll bring that up and figure...
Yeah, because this, this little sentence they have in here is not very good.
Always room for improvement.
That's what we're here for.
What's that?
That's what we're here for. Don't we know it?
All right. So are you all set with this?
Is the board willing to... Well, there was, there was a draft letter for that one, right?
Yep, there was a draft letter.
And we could adjust it further if you, to get the reconfigure instead of restripe?
You got the handful?
Yep.
I remember what you wrote.
Yeah, I remember what I wrote.
I was very eloquent in that letter also.
So, yes, make that change.
Then again, the recommendation, whatever it was to strike the provision about, because changing the special permit, so that way, to just point that the uses table, we stay as is, and where it says SPA, it would go to this board, or it says SPB, it goes to the board, just like it does today.
Okay. We have a motion to approve that letter and the changes that were made?
Some...
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So we've got everything in the general business, boys? Sharon, Jeff, did you have any other comments?
I'm sorry.
Okay, I have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.